Ladies and to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Constitution which founded our republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call a meeting to order. We would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved to second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign. Now this is time and place where public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution fifteen dash fifty-two approving the mayor's budget, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. This public hearing has been postponed from the February twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protest been received?
Been received.
Are there any oral protests against this matter? Anyone who wish to speak against the budget? I'm sorry, your name and address for the record, please.
Adam Haywood, twenty oh seven Fifth Avenue. Um, I think you guys are spending too much. It's like a bunch of liberals up here. You need to stop, cut things back, only pay for what government needs to pay, all the welfare, all that other crap needs to go.
Thank you for your input. We don't pay welfare out of here, so, thank you. Anybody else? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Seeing no one, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Uh, it covers no surprise that I've expressed concerns with, uh, this budget previously. The non-farell noted that spending under this budget increases by twelve percent. Uh, the deficit grows, the reserve shrink by about two million dollars. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you correctly, uh, described the deficit spending as obviously unsustainable. And you have expressed concern in your narrative to, uh, to eliminate, uh, the budget deficit by controlling expenses. Um, I wish respectfully to point out that you used essentially those same words, uh, during the discussion on last year's budget. The planned increase on spending does not sound like a strategy for cost containment. Correctly note that the city, uh, was cut a break in the current budget, uh, by a slight reduction in retirement costs, as well as, uh, as a public study on, on, uh, healthcare costs. And that changes could have had a catastrophic effect on future budgets. Should stand as no surprise to a lot of people in this community that their healthcare costs have been skyrocketing over the past year. And that common sense would suggest that, uh, good risk management would begin to prepare for these things, for these eventualities within the city budget. If there's not already a blueprint for reducing these expenditures, then to me, this kind begs the question, so how do we plan on, uh, closing that, that budget deficit? In just a short time from now, I anticipate that this council will be voting to increase sewer fees. Increase, uh, has already been factored into this current budget, so the additional revenue essentially has already been spent. So what is the plan going forward? How are we going to close the, the deficit? Also tonight, we'll be considering a strategic plan for, that will guide our policies going forward through the next year and beyond. That strategic plan plainly states, in the intent to develop new funding sources. In assessing challenges confronting the city, there's no mention, either in the strategy or in any other documents that I've found, that provide for deficit reduction or budget reduction, whether reduced revenues are described as a threat. This is not new. Last year's budget narrative described threats to revenue, advocating for a rise in the sewer fees. In this environment, it is unacceptable, in my mind, that this budget also includes an additional allocation for, uh, for increased salaries to, to this city council. And so, so I most reluctantly, uh, disagree with this budget. I agree with last year based upon the premise that steps would be taken to, to, to reduce, uh, the spending and the deficit spending. And, uh, I reluctantly, uh...
Okay. On February twentieth, I'll ring and burg send an email to many residents of the city council plus that was titled Redding and Good Times in City Hall. His email intentionally was filled with half truths and blatantly false statements. I provided Mr. Ringenberg specific detail on this budget, and I'm left to assume that he wrote his article knowing that he was making false statements. I'm only left, left to guess.
Well, certainly was.
Uh, please don't, please don't, everybody. I am left only to guess his true motivation as to why he would want to damage the reputation of our city government and cause harm to the citizens by providing ruinous information. To provide a comprehensive response to those residents who have asked questions related to his article, in hope of providing clarifications to all council plus citizens, I will take each and every assertion that he has made and respond to each one individual. Assertion number one, city revenues are expected to increase by fifteen million. Thank your toilet and your county accessory. This is an inaccurate statement. The fiscal year sixteen budget estimates sewer rental fees will increase one point three million dollars, and property taxes collected will increase seven hundred and six thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. This is a two million and three thousand dollar increase, not a fifteen million dollar increase. Statement number two, expenditures will increase by, to a hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred, increasing spending by twelve percent, which was just alluded to, over the next year. This too is an inaccurate statement. In the most recent fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, that ended last June thirtieth, the city actually spent a hundred and forty-nine million eight hundred thousand. And in fiscal year fifteen, which is to date still budgeted spending, the budgeted amount is a hundred and twenty-nine million nine hundred thousand. But the city already has budget expenditures that exceed the previously budgeted number of a hundred and twenty-nine million nine hundred, by an estimated additional fifteen million. Those additional expenditures will be brought forward later in this year as a budget amendment, increasing the fiscal year fifteen expenditures to roughly a hundred and forty-five million, which is comparable to the hundred and forty-five million I proposed. In, in fairness to Mr. Ringenberg, the devil's in the details, since I prepared a budget this year, and last year Art Hill prepared it, and in past years, there were inherent differences as how that budget was prepared. I included the entire year's estimated annual expenses, and Art Hill tended to rely on the use of budget amendments later on in the year. No one can say what the actual spending for this year, fiscal year fifteen, tends to be, um, of two thousand and fifteen will be. Nor can we accurately suggest knowing what the annual expenditures will be sixteen months from now. But it's reasonable to say that spending will be similar in the next two years when it was compared to the actual expenditure numbers reported in two thousand and thirteen. Assertion number three, the city is spending more than it takes in, and the new budget will grow Redding by almost two million. In the year that was just completed, June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, revenues actually exceeded expenditures by three hundred and sixty-one thousand six big three. The city has, at this point, established a general fund reserve balance of twenty-one million, which equates to roughly four point two months of operating revenue coverage for general fund expenditures, which, in my opinion, is prudent fiscal planning. It's the planning that helped us get through the flood. If we didn't have that money in reserve, um, we would have not been able to sustain during those times. The proposed fiscal year sixteen budget shows an overall one point eight seven five revenue deficit, not the two million that was just alluded to. And that deficit is attributable to a three point one billion non-cash expenditure related to depreciation in our sanitary sewer system. Mr. Ringenberg was told about this depreciation factor, but apparently the truth doesn't play well in his ground. Where is the money going? It was the question Mr. Ringenberg asked in, in the Ringenberg report. Spending on parks and recreation increased one point one million, five hundred and fifty thousand will be spent on Los Fest, is his statement. The line item he references, uh, for parks is actually recreation and culture, not just parks. Therefore, includes the library. Library operations increased a hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred. Five hundred and fifty thousand is budgeted for Mr. Los, or for Los Fest, but Mr. Ringenberg conveniently omits that private donations will pay the entire five hundred and fifty thousand. Corporate sponsors like American National Bank, ConAgrar, HGM, Iowa West Foundation, Southwest Iowa Foundation, to name a few, will cover that expense. The only taxpayer expense involved in Los Fest are the salaries of parks employees as they prepare the site, and by the way, these parks employees are already on the city's payroll. Uh, number two, more money to expand bicycle trails. There is in the CIP program for the bonding that was approved two weeks ago, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, which would be spent on bike trails and expansion of parks like Fairmont Park. And so, to a certain extent, there is some truth in that statement, although that eight hundred and sixty-four thousand is amortized over the life of the bonds and won't come out in one fiscal year. A hundred and eighty thousand is the assertion that the, that the city will spend on an image campaign. There is nowhere in this budget, as Mr. Ringenberg already knows, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for an image campaign. I had explained to the council in the written narrative that I budgeted twenty thousand for slightly more than ten percent of the cost to participate in the citywide image campaign, which ultimately should help economic development and tourism, and pay significant returns on that twenty thousand dollars in, in hotel motel tax and new property tax development. Assertion number four, money for economic development, uh, one point one million for Bass Pro. This again is inaccurate. The city pays toward the property tax of Bass Pro, approximately seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand million, which the, the city then recaptures as TIF revenue. Cost of the taxpayers is, is the cost of the paperwork associated with the TIF processing. Iowa West actually pays mortgage of one point one million. Bass Pro pays rent and the county chips in, and so, um, we don't pay one point one million towards Bass Pro. One point five million, again the assertion, one point five million spent on the Mid-America Center operating, and operating losses were six hundred and forty thousand dollars. This too is inaccurate. The MAC operating loss that in two thousand and fourteen, which is the most recent year's completed operating loss, was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-three. In this budget, the city budgeted three hundred, or I'm sorry, three point four million in MAC revenue, three point eight million in MAC expense, that's a four hundred deficit for the fiscal year. In fiscal year fourteen, the most recent act, so the city spent the a hundred and fifty-eight four eighty-three to cover the operating loss. It also paid Caesar's two hundred and seventy thousand in management fee. The, uh, hotel motel tax that the city receives covers two hundred thousand of that expense. Iowa West, um, covers seventy-five thousand, and Harris covers seventy-five thousand. So three hundred and fifty thousand of that operating loss is budgeted to be covered. The two hundred thousand the city budgeted is savings and hotel motel tax that is owed to Iowa West, that Iowa West has agreed to forebill to, uh, help with the operating loss at the Mid-America Center. A related but not direct expense was two hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and sixty-two that was appropriated for capital improvements, um, in, from a capital improvement sinking fund that paid for capital improvements made to the project. Uh, the sixth assertion is the city's, um, plans to spend one point three million to assist a number of housing development projects. I believe this is inaccurate, but honestly, I don't know where the one point three million dollar number comes from. The Community Development Department has revenue expenditures that total two point four nine million over and above its annual allocation of TIF payments, which, uh, for next year would be two, six million, uh, two hundred and thirty thousand. Um, these are allocated in a prescribed manner, uh, based on governmental appropriations that are under governmental fees. Number seven, don't forget about the one point four million dollar rate increase next year, um, in sewer rates, um, while expenditures will only increase three hundred and eighty thousand. So a little surplus is always good, is the assertion. This is inaccurate. Again, the budget calls for an increase of one point three million in sewer fee rental revenue. Um, the sewer maintenance operations have been working on a deficit, so the combination of that deficit and the increased expenditure account for the vast majority of the fee increase. However, the city has set aside some funding, uh, to rebuild the reserve account, which has been completely depleted and is not, um, fiscally sound, uh, funding, um, or planning. Number eight, if you had trouble paying debt, consider working for the city. Your pay will be way ahead of the forty-seven thousand per capita income in Council Plus. The new budget includes an across, includes across-the-board two point five percent pay increase. This is deceptive, um, but, um, it's not fair to come, to compare a per capita income to city employee income. Per capita income includes unemployed residents and underemployed residents in, in the number it reaches. So to say that, um, fully employed residents make more than unemployed residents is just a logical assumption. City wages are negotiated through a collective bargaining process and then approved by the council. The impasse and collective bargaining process is always subject to binding arbitration. Iowa cities haven't had much success disputing, uh, bargaining disagreements with an arbitrator, since the arbitrator's judgment rationale typically is based on which party is most adversely affected by the decision. So their determination almost always favors employees because in their opinion, cities can just raise property taxes to cover any adverse consequences to the city. Looking at the entirety of negotiating, negotiated wages for next year, um, the average salary increase is two point five percent across all four unions, which represent our city employees. By the way, uh, two weeks ago on Monday, Mr. Ringenberg voted in favor to ratify the, the Clerco Workers Association Union Contract for next year, giving them a two point five percent salary increase. So maybe you need to ask him for his justification, given his criticism. Uh, statement number nine, twenty-four city employees' base salary exceeds one hundred thousand dollars. This is a true statement. The city employs attorneys, engineers, accountants, public safety professionals, IT professionals, and human services professional city. Employee hiring competes with private sector employers, and our salaries must be competitive if we want competent employees. The mayor's budget increases his salary, a mayor's seventeen hundred dollars. Again, this is inaccurate. The budget doesn't increase my salary. My salary is set by ordinance and is based on an indices tied to the Midwest Consumer Price Index, not to exceed two and a half percent. Next year, it'll increase seven tenths of one percent, or a total annual increase of six hundred and nineteen dollars over the annual pay I'm receiving this year. Um, also slipped into the, and final assertion, oh, excuse me, also slipped into this budget is a twenty-four percent increase for city council. Talk about unnecessary spending. Um, the council plus, city council has had one pay increase in the last fifty years. In nineteen sixty-three, the city council was paid three hundred dollars per month. In nineteen ninety-five, thirty-two years later, the compensation increased to six hundred dollars per month. Now, after twenty years, and no compensation increase, it has been proposed, um, that the salary increase to eight hundred and ninety-one dollars per month. Two council members have openly argued against the pay increase. Mr. Ringenberg wasn't one of them. In fairness to him, he really didn't argue in favor or against the pay increase. We put it in the budget, since it's an nominal amount, uh, it's a budget increase of seventeen thousand four hundred dollars for the entire city council, um, when you include all five council positions. And the council can decide at a later date if they want to pursue voting themselves a pay increase. If the council salary bothers you, you need to investigate, uh, the rate of pay, sorry, just in county supervisors, which is five point eight times more than the city council makes. They operate with a budget that's about two-thirds of the budget, and they collect more property taxes than we do. And they get paid five point eight times more than the city council members do, and they get full health insurance benefits. So the outrage, about twenty-four percent increase, I think is unfounded. I'm done.
Now, I endeavor to, to point out, and I'll say this as clearly as I can, that every number I have cited, every line item, comes out of both report and bully, as well as the, the years budget book. Note that many of, of, of his comments incorporate a lot of data that's not included in the budget book.
That's not true.
So I'll, I'll let that speak for itself.
That's not true. And if we've gone through this process before, we throw something out and say, it's here and you don't, everybody can look at it. I, I, again, it's online, please go online. Everything I said is accurate. There's no inaccuracies at all in what I said. I tried to err on the side of caution and, and say that, um, potentially it could be misunderstood because of the way I prepared the budget, but many of it's just out and out of right fabrication.
Now, Mr. Mayor, if you ask that, we'd not be interrupting. So I, I would ask for the same courtesy. And, and back to, back to my point about the numbers, is you, you made a point regarding depreciation, and that you pointed that out to me. Yes, you did. And what I discovered, looking back at last year's budget, is that that depreciation number was not budgeted free there fiscal year fourteen or in the current budget, but yet those expenses were, were still cataloged. Now, anyway.
I think I explained that in the, it's how the budget was prepared. The former finance director always did the depreciation factor at the end of June. It's always been the same amount. I just did it upfront, um, and so, the mere fact is that there's not a deficit. In fact, there's a surplus overall. What there is a deficit is, is in the general fund, um, which is what we pay our employees with, is why I wrote cautionary comments to the council, that we can't sustain deficits in the general fund. We do have adequate reserves to do that this year. Um, I asked for some lenience from the council so that I can reevaluate expenses when we get the final numbers for two thousand and fifteen, because budget is just the estimation of what things can be. And so rather than lay people off today, I would rather see how close my estimations are based on two years ago's actual numbers compared to this year's actual numbers. And I think, um, in that analysis, we've already discovered that we can generate more revenue based on our building permit fees and, and the way we've changed how we, um, how we permit a significant construction project in town. But it's still too early to tell, and so I'd like some time to analyze that.
So if I may finish my, my comments at, at this point in time, uh, as I said, I, I, I leave it to you to go back, look at those budget numbers, uh, like the filings that are made to the state that show that our reserves are going down by two million dollars next year. Also leave it to you to review the, the budget book. And I find it unfortunate when I have previously told the mayor, I appreciate the difficult position he is in. I, I've congratulated him for some moves to, to do some things that he's attempted to do in, in this budget. And for, for this to be thrown back with terms of, uh, false accusations and falsehoods, uh, frankly, is, is beyond pale and regrettable. And, and I, I would hope that, that we can have good faith disagreements without ad hoc and attacks on, on individuals, so that we can move forward with the best interest of all the taxpayers and voters.
Well, I've already asked it at the outrage that, of a person that mails out an email that says, Redding and Good Times in City Hall.
It's free speech, and, and...
Falsehoods, blatant falsehoods that damage the reputation of the city does offend.
So if I disagree...
My mother told me at one time that the one thing you have, that no one can take away from you, is your credibility. And God bless my mother's soul, she was wrong when she said that, because falsehoods and, and misrepresentations can do the same thing. So it's incumbent on me to set the record straight that that article had, um, of thirty assertions, maybe two I could say were accurate. Um, and so it's, it's important, I think, that I bring it forward. Did citizens know, members of this council's credibility's on, um, the line here? They've been contacted, they can't believe, the people they contacted can't believe they do this or that. Again, um, and I know you're not an accountant, you're an attorney, but it's, the, the reduction in reserves is the value of our city's sewer system. It's a three million dollar depreciation, which is a paper transaction. It doesn't have anything to do with cash. You can't spend it. Um, and so, the, when you say there's a two million dollar reduction in reserves, that is not an accurate statement. There is a one point eight seven five million dollar reduction in, and that's not even true. There's a three point one million dollar depreciation reduction in the sewer system. Overall, there's a one point eight seven five million dollar deficit, and when you add back the three point one million, you have a surplus. In two thousand and fourteen, which was the first half year I was in office, we brought the budget in with a surplus. This year, it's too early to tell, but we'll see what happens. But, but to say that I lied last year and said I'd managed spending, and I'm lying again this year, and you can't support the budget, that is not a fair statement.
I have never accused you, nor will I ever accuse you of lying.
You sat here last year and told us, Mayor, and you didn't do it.
Well, I did do it. Very well.
Well, I'd like an opportunity to just speak to this because I have received emails, and this is what I want everybody to know, is that, um, it's hard to believe from the emails that I'm getting and what I've read, that there wasn't some intent to give half the truth, because this is my budget book, and I'll share it with anybody. All of those tabs were what I had to do to track what all these costs were, because there's revenues that offset the expenses. And so when I started getting the emails that directly came from the Ringenberg report, what it was, is it was willing to tell you that we spent all this money on the Bass Pro, but neglected to tell you that the revenues covered those costs, that that wasn't your taxpayer dollars. Um, and there was no mistake or misunderstanding about the money being spent on Los Fest. That had been made very clear to the council, it was in the notations in the council minutes. So yeah, if you want to say that in the budget, there's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Los Fest, that's true. If you want to neglect to tell the people that there's also donations for every penny of that in the budget. I was very frustrated to get emails saying that I had raised, you know, that we had raised our council pay. There's never been a vote on that. Um, when the discussion came up, I was against that. And I will tell you that Councilman Ringenberg never said one word. He didn't say he was against it, he didn't say he didn't think that was a good idea. He sat quietly because he knew he could put that in the Ringenberg report. And my frustration is, is that when I'm getting these emails from people, they truly believe what they got in that report. And then it gets sent out, it's being sent out in mass amounts by other groups. So everyone who gets it believes it, and there's just nothing in there that is the full truth. You take a bunch of half truths and put it on paper, and it makes it look like we've got a bad budget, like we're not managing the money. And don't believe for one minute these were accidental. That report, it was with intent that the rest of the story wasn't told. So anybody who has questions, please contact each of us individually. I will share my book with you, I will show you where it's all at. And so, you know, to say all those numbers are in there, you can look at the budget, you're right, they are all, they are all in there. And so are the revenues that cover these items. So there's a lot more to the story. So don't just believe this report when you get it. Reach out to the rest of the council people, go to the library, or go online and read the budget, and look for the cross-referencing items that are the revenue for those items.
When, uh, when the issue of the additional number for the council salaries was, was discussed amongst council members, there was some discussion about the timing of a vote to increase the council. And when that vote had to be taken in order... And when that vote had to be taken in order for it to become effective at the beginning of two thousand and sixteen. And what that tells me, ladies and gentlemen, and I was listening very carefully, that there is a, that there was some intent to put that additional revenue in here, let it be approved as part of the budget, and then later on in the year, without, without discussion on, on the budget, to then take up the, the issue of the pay increase. I'm just expressing concern at a time when we are asking for more and more contributions from the taxpayers that we're making an additional appropriation for salary revenues.
Let me certainly explain, there was that discussion. And that discussion certainly revolved around how the city council would go about the pay increase. And so, you know what that discussion is. The city council cannot vote themselves a pay increase. They can vote future city councils a pay increase. So, when Mr. Ringenberg alludes to there was discussions about timing, the discussions were if, if it got voted in this year, when would it go into effect? It would not go into effect until the new council gets seated on January first, which would be six months into the year. And so, that was important to me if I put it in the budget because I wasn't budgeting the entire seventeen thousand. I would be budgeting half of that since half of the budget year would be over with. Again, a budget is an estimation. I want to be the most conservative estimator so that we don't get surprises. And so, um, again, the goal is to err on the side of caution. So, I included it. Nobody asked me to include it. I included it of my own volition of half a year's increase in case the council decided they wanted the increase. Again, two people spoke against it. One spoke in favor and two others expressed no opinion. So, there was not a majority. If three had said we're against it, there would have been a majority. If three would have said they're in favor, there would have been a majority. There was no majority. Um, I cautiously budgeted the increase so that we didn't end up short if the council decided it should get an increase. And again, we are talking about the entire council for the entire year, seventeen thousand dollars. Um, and is the, would be the second raise in fifty years.
There's one more thing I wanted to add to about the increases for city employees. You know, it is a difficult position since I've been on this council because I didn't understand it five years ago when I came on the council. You know, how the union contracts were negotiated and just how little, uh, you can do, you know, if you go to mediation. But I guess I'd like to say one thing. It's like two point five percent. And it's my understanding that, you know, retired government employees, retired military, that even their retirement pay gets a COLA, which is cost of living increase, that I understand this year was like two point six percent. So, I find it interesting.
I am.
Now, what was it? Because I take Google it.
I believe it's just south of one percent. That's the letter that I got.
One percent.
That's the letter that I got.
Okay, well, I, you know, we can make some phone calls and find out what it was, but...
Have yourself a...
Your taxes pay for cost of living increases for government employees who aren't even government employees anymore. So, I just want you to keep that in mind, that the people that just got this increase, they're actually still employed. They go to work every day. They do a good job. They get it, they get a raise. Your taxes still pay for people who aren't even employed by the government anymore to get increases every year. So, you know, I, I find it interesting that somebody would vote in favor of the contract and then put in their report that, you know, the city, that this terrible thing by giving this pay increase. I just, it, it's really frustrating when I read these reports because it looks like the intent is to make the council look like they're dishonest or to make the mayor's budget look dishonest. And it's, it's very clear that the money, there's no big sack of money sitting around. There's no three million dollars. One of the emails I got indicated there's three million dollars in the budget that we didn't need. You can't continually not raise your levy and not, and you have increases just like in your household. You know, if the city wasn't doing a good job, you would see these levies going up, but you haven't seen that. Is this ten years? Ten years you haven't seen your levy go up? The only way that can be accomplished because property values haven't increased that much is to do a good job and to do a good job at containing costs. So, I, I want everybody to understand that. And again, email me with your questions. I'd be happy to answer them.
I would like to add, excuse me, and this is, this is something that I've said in, in past budget years, that during my time on the council, we've, I believe that the city staff has done a pretty darn good job of living within our means. Um, ten years about a levy increase. And we talk about salary increases, but the component that has not been mentioned yet is, okay, you have, you have a salary increase because that's what's bargained for. But there's a give and take on both sides. So, the city has come out ahead in some of the healthcare costs. Um, when I first started on the council, the healthcare that was on a flat fee, they paid five dollars or something. Uh, it was a ridiculous amount that, that they were paying for, healthcare. And it took us years to get all of the unions, and I believe all of the unions now are percentage-based. So, it's those kind of things that the city has continued to do year after year. Um, but it takes time and we are living within our budget and we're trying to do the best we can without raising taxes. So, I think that, once again, you know, the city staff has done a heck of a job. And, and a budget is a plan, um, to the, to the council salary, whether action is taken on that later or not. Nobody knows if it, if it will or it won't, but it's a plan. We've planned to make it because if it goes unspent, it goes unspent. It's, it's very simple. I mean, I, I think this budget is very different than budgets in the private sector. When I do my own budgets, I budget for expenses that may or may not ever occur. And you come in under budget or over budget. That's just, that's just how budgeting works.
Well, with regard to the general budgeting process, it's complicated. It takes a lot of time. It's not terribly glamorous to, to look through it and to determine how to allocate. So, I can't imagine how much less glamorous it is to write this graph. It takes a lot of time. We have to pay for things. Sewers have to flush. Roads have to be built and maintained. Now, if things be better, yes. I, I hear a lot of times folks say, well, this is horrible or this is that or this is that. We're an older city with three hundred miles of roads, which means we have six hundred miles of linear miles of gutters or curbs. We have to maintain the, the property base that continues to go up, one to two percent a year maybe with costs. If you know the story, I don't have to tell you they run up, divide the materials more than that. Yet we kept the levy. And in fact, my, uh, three years on the council, it's gone down about point five, four percent over those three years. Do I wish we could do even more? Yes. But the streets have to work. The lights have to work. The parks have to be mowed. We hear a lot from folks about how they want it to be better. We have to pay for it. This is, again, not glamorous work. There's a lot of unsung work in this that it is a lot easier to look at something in isolation and say, aha. But I think you have to look at the whole picture. And I think if you look at the whole picture, you'll see that if you look at other cities across the country surely, but even across our state and metro area, how many other places do you know where the tax rate hasn't gone up in ten years? How many other places do you know that gets awards towards parks and continues to expand millions of dollars? We just got awards. How many other places do you know with people like we've got? I think we've got a really good town and, you know, it's, it's really easy to top down government. This isn't Washington though, and I'm glad it's not. We've got a good city and a good group of people. And I'd like to focus on the positive things in, in working together. And, you know, out of all those issues, I really don't want to get into personalities. But the one issue that, that I have gotten a lot of comments about it, and by the way, I always post my questions I get if people gave me permission to do it, of course, and my answers on Facebook or on my web, mostly on Facebook. And, uh, and I don't think I can ever be accused of saying something that's politically popular. I say a lot of times things that aren't probably in my own best interest, but they're what I believe. You know, people ask me a question, I give them an honest answer, not what they want to hear always. Uh, and on the salary one, I've, I've been very clear that I believe that traditionally, until nineteen sixty-five, you served for free. And that's fine, but if you look at traditionally who was able to serve, there's a very, very, very small percentage of people who were even financially able to serve because basically it was a rich man's hobby. We always talk about how we want more people involved in government. We want good ideas to come from anybody who's got a good idea, not who can afford to have a good idea. And, you know, some, some of us are in a position to, to, to give it back. And, you know, to the extent that an increase, somebody doesn't want it, other folks need it. It's a lot. If you do the amount of hours, you'll see it's actually less than the wage. But if, if anyone has difficulty accepting it, they can do what I do and I give everything back to the community. So, if someone has a problem with it, does, I encourage that person to also give it back.
Yeah, and thank you, Ms. Watson. I appreciate that. And I, I have given it back. I gave about twelve thousand dollars to charity last year.
For that year?
Off of my retirement income. Now, I've heard now three times the fact that the levies have not been raised in ten years. The two largest levies that this city relies upon are capped. They cannot increase. They are capped by state law as certain... So, to, to congratulate the city for, for not raising tax levies above the permissible cap strikes me as, as rather odd. This helps to explain why the city, in its narratives and strategic plans and its discussions, refers to looking for additional revenues through fees. And so, I would, I would ask the kind citizens to stay clear in future weeks and months as frosty late new fees is brought before this council.
Um, again, some misstatement of truth. Uh, there are ten levies under which the city operates. The largest levy is capped by law. That's what's commonly referred to as the eight-ten levy because the maximum amount you can collect is eight dollars and ten cents. Its real name is the regular general levy. The second levy that's capped is the emergency levy. That is twenty-seven cents. Um, and so, I'll go down the levies. You'll find that it is the lowest.
You said two.
You said the two largest. So, um, this year for transit, the levies thirty-one point eight five nine cents, higher than twenty-seven cents. The airport, twenty-seven cents, equal to twenty-seven cents. Liability and property, seventy point five three four cents, higher than twenty-seven cents, which is the one that just was alluded to as the highest levy. Egg property, three dollars point three seven five cents. Again, the emergency is twenty-seven cents, which is the one that's capped. Now, police and fire retirement, a dollar, seventy-six point ninety-three cents. Uh, Pyke and Ipers is, is ninety-three point six seven four cents. Other employee benefits, two dollars and ninety-two point ninety-five cents. Um, the utilities levy is two dollars point four six five cents. And the debt services levy is two dollars and forty-five cents. So, to say that the two highest are capped and the city should be congratulated for holding the levy steady, again, is just not an accurate statement. There are ten levies and eight of those can be increased or decreased. Two are capped. One is the largest. One is the smallest. They're not the two largest levies.
One last question. Second.
That's our discussion. All those in favor have signed if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And now, uh, a vote on the motion to accept the mayor's budget. All those in favor have signed if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye.
Aye.
And for those at home, because they often say they can't tell how the vote went, the vote was supported on. All right, uh, this is the time and place for a public hearing advertised on the matter of resolution fifteen dash sixty-nine, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the Hazel Street wall repair fiscal year sixteen dash twenty-one. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Had any written protest been received?
Had received.
Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in regards to this matter?
My name's Christophe Pena. I live over here at five oh five South Sixth Street. Now, as your town referred, was referred to as a hardship grant?
For property taxes?
Not just for property, but for entire city taxes and there are...
That, I'm, I'm not sure, Christophe, exactly what you're alluding to, but the county supervisors do grant hardship property tax deferment, I think is the right way to put it.
Now, there is another way to go.
But it can, it would stick with the property until such time as you saw.
And there is one thing y'all can do, since y'all are a small town and y'all are having fiscal problems right now. If you go to whitehouse.gov, you can actually request for a federal hardship grant from this website. You go online right there. It goes directly to where it says sixteen hundred Pennsylvania. And they will ask for, uh, specific information. When you send this to them, they will be able to grant you just that, especially since you have the numbers to back what y'all need to do.
And that will pay for the Hazel Street wall repair? I'm confused.
Yeah, they could pay for a whole lot because when you send in these numbers, letting them know that your town hasn't been able to do so much for so long, they will be able to answer all this for you right at this website.
All right. Thank, thank you.
And then go ahead, send all those paperwork in, send your plans and everything else into whitehouse.gov and then you will get a response back probably twenty-four to forty-eight hours with information as to what all you can do.
Thank you so much. The, the, and the topic we're on right now is the Hazel Street wall repair. But thank you for the input. We'll make note of that. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in regards to the Hazel Street wall repair? Team, now it's the council's pleasure.
Question taken.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor have signed if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye. Now, this is time and place for a public hearing advertised on the matter of resolution fifteen dash seventy, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the South First Street Neighborhood Rehab Phase Six Project fiscal year sixteen dash twelve. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
Been received.
Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in regards to the, um, South First Street Neighborhood Rehab Phase Section? That closes this public hearing. It's the council's pleasure.
Motion approved. Second.
Discussion.
City is a year divided and, you know, I was, hopefully I can hold the study and if I don't, I mean, I'm in on it or not, so. Um, this is the South First Street area. We'll see if here's first and then becomes Madison. These show the different phases of, this is in part the original plan of the city, which dates to eighteen fifty-three. And a lot of these roads date to the early part of the twentieth century, if that. And what your local option sales tax, sometimes called lost local option sales tax, that's the shorthand for it, goes towards, there are two big areas right now. I think a lot, I get a lot of questions about this. I think my colleagues probably do as well. Uh, the two areas that are currently being focused on are the South First area. You'll see these are areas that have been done or will be done in the next year or two, about three years or so. And then, um, the other area is Lower Bennett, where I lived in high school. We, of course, it's based on need. It's based on trying to get different areas of town, trying to get that efficiency of doing this area all at once and you don't inconvenience people because it is a big inconvenience when it's being fixed. And, of course, you want a new road, but it, you know, it takes, it's an inconvenience if it's closed for a long period of time. So, it's all planned out. It's all, it's all used through your local option sales tax, which is one of the few funds we have, other than the gas tax in the state, to pay for the roads. That's our dominant funder of the roads. That's the predominant funder of the roads. And I don't think people realize with limited pot of money we have, and do we fall behind in, in road? Yeah, we do. Uh, the only way to get ahead of it would be to increase taxes, and we haven't. We're trying to do the best we can before we die. I think that based on planning it and, and doing it based on need and in a strategic way, I think we're getting the biggest bang for our buck we can, and I commend it.
The other discussion?
Um, this might be something good to put on the website so people can reference it and see exactly, you know, what phase will affect where they live, is that possible?
Sure.
That'd be great.
And, and same thing, I mean, Nate, that's a Facebook idea. If anybody wants a copy, I'm sure we'll both have on our Facebook. Bye tomorrow, or stuff you can always look up online.
More discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye, and I'm going.
Ordnance is on to agree. Ordnance is amending Title V Sewers and Title II Revenue and Finance, Chapter 2.08.050 Fees and Charges in the Schedule Fees as authorized in Title V.
Message, second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye? Oh, lies.
Sorry. I was, I was planning for both, but we can just do it for A1.
Yeah, you read A, but-
Yeah.
No, I thought it was both two.
Yeah, I thought it was separate.
Yeah, give it a try.
Okay, then that was for ordinance 6228. Ordnance 6227, amending Title V Sewers, Chapter 5.05, Definitions and Abbreviations, and Chapter 5.10, General Restrictions. I amend these sections 5.05, 010, 5.05, 020, 5.10, 040, 5.10, 080, 5.10, 110, 5.10, 120, and 5.10, 150.
I, I, I hesitated on that last vote because I was confused as to what it was that we were doing, because I, I am not voting for, for A1, for, for the T increase. Uh, I wanted to make that.